Welcome everyone, this is February the, uh, February, April the 28th, 2015, our City Council meeting, time is 7:00 PM, so we'll get going right away. First I want to introduce, as always, is recognize groups or individuals who would like to be recognized. Number two would be to receive input from the public. Ms. Lear, I know you have a, you'd like to pass something, every councilman you have a, a little small letter from Ms. Lear, so you should make a little statement.
Mayor Hertel, City Council, for those of you who do not know me, my name is Janice Lear. I live here in Barstown, I know, only lived here nine years. From time to time, I act as a teacher at the one-room schoolhouse. There have been several questions that have come up regarding things in the school. I realize that it will take some time for these questions to be answered, many of which are legal questions, but I thought that they should be addressed. I also realize that my questions may prompt more questions of your own, and so I respectfully submit these questions to you tonight.
I'll take, if y'all want to read that, that's information for you, but I'll take it, I'll get back to Mrs. Lear. Risk management, very nice, we're gonna have to talk a little bit about some different issues that I think I had to get with, trying to get about that, so, nothing big, just make some clarifications that, and some things, when I get done with that, then I'll let you guys know, and let Ms. Lear do some things. Okay, so, move right on to number four, it's the HRB and DRB are planning his own recommendations on the highest poverty to read them work recommendations, please.
COA 1508, Knights of Columbus, in regard to removing and installing mechanical equipment at 111 North 4th Street, recommendation is approval of the installation of the three units in place of the two dated units with the condition that the units be placed as far from the edge of the building as possible to aid in screening. COA 1509, Joanna Marie Joe, Mary Jo Nally, in regard to installing a sign and awning at 119 North 3rd Street, recommendation is approval of the installation of the 43-inch by 41-inch sign and 1.5-inch racket with phenyl, with phenyl, excuse me, with the condition that true color swatches be administratively approved. Approval of the installation of the striped awning with no wording as proposed. COA 15-10, Daryl Hawkins, in regard to replacing the front porch and sidewalk at landscaping and update the parking at 302 South 3rd Street, the applicant also requests approval for a conditional use permit. The recommendation was approval of the installation of a new porch, columns landscaping with the condition that the roof be a shed roof and extend 18 feet across the front of the structure, columns be round or Tuscan and no larger than 68 inches in diameter. Approval of the use of the sunbeam laundry building as a personal office under a conditional use permit. COA 15-12, Margaret Ballard, in regard to installing a storm and entrance door at 202 South 1st Street, recommendation was approval of the installation of the doors with the condition that the storm door be administratively approved after it is assembled. And last is COA 15-14, Carl Donald Comer, wants to install a handicap ramp at 111 South 3rd Street, the recommendation was approval of the installation of the handicap ramp with the condition that the wood be stained to blend with the house and surroundings, and that the ramp be disassembled when ownership changes. Also, the addition of lattice will be administratively approved if needed.
Uh, Mayor? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Okay, um, there are no objections, I move to, I'd like to make the summary motion. I move to accept historical review board recommendations for COA 15-08, 15-09, 15-10, 15-12, and 15-14 with an addition set forth by HRB, and I yield the floor for a second.
A second.
The motion on floor is approve COA 15-08, 15-09, 15-10, 15-12, 15-14, all in favor?
Uh, discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, discussion?
Yeah, question regarding the conditional use permit, does this, approving the COA, that does not approve the conditional use permit, that's a separate topic, that's gonna come later.
What your all's, your all's action is actually a recommendation then to the Board of Adjustment, it's a two-tier process, it goes from the Historical Review Board to you all, then to the Board of Adjustment for their final approval, theirs is the approval, final approval.
For the condition?
For the conditional use permit, I don't know, I guess.
Uh, second question is with regards to this 10, this, this summary has different wording than the minutes, and I'm a little, Bart, maybe you, you're a little bit more clear with this, because the minutes talk about, uh...
They're talking about Daryl's.
Yeah, talking about Daryl's, it's the, uh, the Barstown Historic District Design Review, and they specifically talk about that, whereas the summary doesn't, and I read them both, and Tim, maybe you can address that, what am I, please?
Well, when Councilman Williams said with the recommendations of the conditions that's imposed by the Historical Review Board...
So that goes back?
That would incorporate that by reference.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it, motion is adopted. Uh, number five, correspondence. Next is review the minutes, if there's no objections, I will adopt a motion to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2015. Okay, since there's no objections, the motion to approve the minutes is adopted by unanimous consent. Uh, financial report, the council, if y'all have any questions for Tracy, she is here, if y'all want, anything that you want to discuss on the finance? Tracy?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna say that we're currently in the budget process, we are having a working session May 5th, so if there's any questions that the council has prior to that working session, you can give these to me, so that I can have the information readily available, and then, uh, there's gonna be a finance committee meeting later in May to discuss the mayor's budget, and then, after that, excuse me, we will have the budget ready to, or, the budget ready to bring it to the council.
I have a question, Tracy.
Okay.
I received a copy of city access, uh, the money the city have invested, you know, most time when they use it, give us a full budget, we use it, to save a copy of the city investment.
Copy of the city's investments?
Yes, that's how.
Are you talking about what we have, like, in our, on the district or on the district funds, or?
Right, you guys, oh, yeah.
We don't have that.
Yeah, it's a checking account balances is what we usually get.
For the eight-month term?
Well, they'll take accounts and balance, what is it we have with that?
Well, this was, I think, Councilman Williams, this was supposed to be at the end of September the 30th, so you want, you wanna, you want this updated to this moment?
Yeah, that's what this is, that's what the March one is.
Yes.
Yes, this, uh, this March, oh, uh-huh, when you click there, it has that very first page as, okay, I'll talk to that, okay, all right.
Mayor, this may be, we just, we said, I have some more questions, how is it?
You can, if you want to, yeah, I'm wrong, I've got those answers in the column, so if you want to discuss it, I'd like to discuss it later in the week, so, okay. Ms. Tracy, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Uh, I just said we have the finance committee meeting towards the end of May, depending on the schedule of the co-chair, Mayor, and Rowland, and then, we'll have two readings in June, and then, publication of the ordinance needs to be by June 30th.
Tracy and I are working on that, I know Deb, Fred, and Bobby, and Bill, Bobby, I don't know if y'all have any questions, Councilman Williams, got any questions on the budget or anything? Sounds good. Ready to proceed to the ordinance, the first readings, or, there's no first readings, these second readings, so Barbie, please give the second reading, please.
Ordinance B 2015-04, an ordinance repealing in its entirety and ordinance styled, an ordinance exempting manufacturing establishments from city taxes and repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, whereas the original ordinance number 808 dated June 15th, 2004, provided an exemption from city taxes for five years without specifying which taxes, and whereas the said ordinance applied to any manufacturing operation not then located in the city, if that entity would locate in Barstown without making a specific determination that the particular entity would locate in Barstown only if such incentive were offered, and whereas the original ordinance was amended on June 6th, 2006, ordinance B 2006-09, to identify city property taxation, but did not specify whether that included both real and personal property taxation, and whereas the wording of the said ordinance and amendment is far too broad and not specific as to which taxes are exempt and as to when the inducement is essential. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Barstown that the original tax exempt for manufacturing establishments ordinance enacted on June 15th, 2004, and any and all amendments enacted regarding that ordinance are hereby repealed in their entirety. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon publication as required by law.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve ordinance B 2015-04. Second.
Discussion? Motion on the floor is for B 2015-4, others will require a individual vote, start with Councilman Copeland, please.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, uh, vote is, all, is, motion has been made, is adopted, all in favor, motion is left, thank you. City Attorney, Tim Butler, please, please give a second reading.
Sure, yes sir.
On B 2015-05.
Ordinance number B 2015-05, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended, zoning map entitled zoning map, cities of Barstown, Bloomfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky, by designated 1.223 acres at 971 Bloomfield Road, US 62, from R2 to Family Residential District to B3 Regional Retail Business District. Nelson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval based on findings of fact in the record. The property is described as follows, beginning at a found 5/8 inch rebar with cap stamped hibs 2981, and the south right-of-way line of Bloomfield Road, also known as United States Highway 62, corner to a tract of land conveyed by bypassed properties LLC of record in deep book 477, page 483, in the office of the clerk in Nelson County, Kentucky, thence with the south right-of-way line of Bloomfield Road, north 79 degrees, 09 minutes, 03 seconds, east 260.48 feet to a set 1/2 inch rebar with cap stamped Wolf 3742, in the south right-of-way line of Bloomfield Road, corner of a tract of land conveyed to Bluegrass American Properties LLC of record in deep book 448, page 12, in the clerk's office of forestead, thence leaving the south right-of-way line of Bloomfield Road and running west, the west line of said Bluegrass American Properties LLC, south 06 degrees, 1 minute 36 seconds, east 220.24 feet to a found 5/8 inch rebar, no cap, corner to said Bluegrass American Properties LLC, thence with the north line of said Bluegrass American Properties LLC, south 74 degrees, 13 minutes 37 seconds, west 89.84 feet to a found metal post, corner to said Bluegrass American Properties LLC and Bluegrass Properties LLC, thence with the north line of said bypassed properties LLC, north 81 degrees, 29 minutes 39 seconds, west 169.8985 feet to a found metal post, corner to said bypassed properties LLC, thence with the east line of said bypassed properties LLC, north 08 degrees, 14 minutes 15 seconds, west 171.05 feet to the point of beginning, having an area of 1.223 acres. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict, this ordinance shall have full force and effect upon publication in summary as required by law.
Mayor, if I'm in board, I would like to move to approve ordinance number B 2015-05, amendment as read, and I yield the floor for a second.
Second. Motion's on the floor to approve B 2015-05, the rezoning, 2437, Janice C. Adams, discussion?
That's fine, just ask for the individual.
Yeah, and this one is also an individual vote, I'll start with Councilman Simpson this time.
Uh, aye.
Eyes have it, motion's adopted. Okay, on the next is the parliamentary procedure allows the groups of the similar ordinances to be, asked to be, bring them all together before the legislative body by a single motion, and I propose the following six to be, to allow to follow under that course of action.
I'll, I'll read them off, given that we are allowed to do that under the state law, I request or suggest that, I'm gonna make a motion, that we consider B 2015-06 through B 2015-11 as one motion.
There was a direct reflect that Councilman Simpson made in the first motion, I think, and then...
Well, we need, we need this one to be acted as first.
Okay, and then, Councilman Simpson will be second, right?
Is that right, Mr. Simpson? Okay.
And those to be read, though, correct? Right, all right, so Barbie, will you give the second reading on each of the ordinance, and after that, the reading, you asked for it?
You should take a vote on that motion first, the motion to consider them together, there was a motion as second, but that wasn't a vote on that motion, so there should be a vote on that motion, I don't think you need an individual vote.
No, not for that.
So, so the motion is, if, the first motion will be made by Councilman Fred Hagan, second by Councilman Simpson, the first motion will be that these be allowed to be grouped together?
For the first reading.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye. Eyes, eyes have it, okay, now, Barbie, will you indicate the second reading on each of the ordinances?
And just as a reminder, after each reading, the mayor will call for an individual vote, and we'll go to each reading thereafter. Ordinance B 2015-06, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance relating to Chapter 51, solid waste management of the city of Barstown's code of ordinances. The city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows, that section 51.10, delinquency be amended as follows, strike all content of the first paragraph 51.110, oh, excuse me, 1-0, delinquency, and insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in combined utility systems, subchapter 55.05. All ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Individual vote?
Yes.
Councilman Copeland?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it, motion, that is adopted. B 2015-07, please.
An ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance styled, an ordinance of the city of Barstown, Kentucky relating to the operation of the city's combined utility system, Chapter 55, be it hereby ordained by the city of Barstown, Kentucky, that section 55.05 be added as follows, under section, insert, 55.05, billing, wind due, and penalty. Chapter 55.05, insert, all customers will be billed monthly. Billing dates for groups of accounts shall be as deemed appropriate by the CFO or officer in charge of billing. Billing dates shall be on or near the first, 7th, 15th, or 21st of each month. Each bill shall show the charge of each of the services on that account. All bills shall be paid by the due date shown on such bills, and all bills not paid by such time shall be subject to discontinuance of any or all services. One late or delinquent notice shall be rendered after the due date for each unpaid bill, and shall give the customer notice that service may be disconnected on the 10th day after the notice is rendered. A late fee of 5% of the unpaid charges, or $3.50, whichever is the greater, shall be added to the account and shall be paid by the specified disconnect date. All payments to accounts are applied proportionately to the service charges rendered unless the customer in writing to the CFO specifies that the payment is for a particular service. All payments may be applied to past due charges first and then current charges. If payment of the account balance is not received by the city by the disconnect date, any and/or all services may be disconnected, provided however, if only cable service is unpaid, no other service shall be disconnected, and provided that if a particular service is paid in full, that service cannot be disconnected. A disconnect fee will be charged to each account disconnected, that fee will be $25 for customer accounts within the city, Barstown city limits, or $40 for all other customers. The fee will be charged for each truck roll to that house to disconnect a specific service. The city shall charge only a $10 disconnect fee if the only service disconnected is internet, and if that disconnect is done from the office. Reconnection of service shall be made only after payment of all current and past due bills and account balances, and after the customer requests a reconnect. Reconnection of service will be performed as staff's work schedules permit, the next business day for water or electric, and three business days for cable. Reconnection of internet disconnected from the office will be made during office hours on the day payment is received and reconnection is requested. This ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication in summary as required by law.
You'll vote individual vote on this, Councilman Simpson, you'll start.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, B 2015-08.
An ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance relating to Chapter 52, water of the city of Barstown's code of ordinances. The city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows, that section 52.06, billing, payment, due date, and penalty, paragraph B, and section 52-11, tampering with meter fines, with water meters, fines, be amended as follows. Section 52.06, billing, payment, due date, and penalty, strike all content of paragraph B, insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in combined utility systems, subchapter 55.05. Section 52.11, tampering with water meters and fines. Customers shall be held responsible for tampering with, breaking seals of, interfering with, connecting or disconnecting the city's water meters or other equipment of the city installed on the customers premises, and shall be held liable for same according to law. Notwithstanding, any person who reconnects or bypasses a meter that has been disconnected for non-payment of service will be assessed $150 for the first occurrence, and $300 per occurrence for any additional occurrences, in addition to any other applicable balances, fees, or charges due. Likewise, any person who establishes water service by bypassing, connecting, or reconnecting a meter will be assessed, strike $100, insert $150 per occurrence. No one except the employees or agents of the city shall be allowed to connect, disconnect, or make any internal or external adjustments to any meter or any other piece of apparatus which shall be the property of the city. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Individual vote, Councilman Copeland?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it, motion that is adopted. Uh, B 2015-09, trace one.
An ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance relating to Chapter 53, wastewater of the city of Barstown's code of ordinances, the city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows, that section 53.125, billing, paragraph B, be amended as follows. Section 53.125, billing, strike all content of paragraph B, insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in combined utility systems, subchapter 55.05. All ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Individual vote, Councilman Simpson?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, B 2015-10, electricity amendments?
An ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance styled, an ordinance establishing and fixing a schedule of rates to be charged by the city of Barstown for electrical current used by residential, commercial, and industrial customers of the city of Barstown, providing and prescribing for billing, due dates, and penalty for failure, failure to pay charges due within the time so prescribed. Establishment and fixing a power cost adjustment surcharge for all customers regardless of classification, Chapter 50. The city of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain as follows, that sections 50.08, billing, wind due, penalty, paragraph B, and section 50.10, tampering with electrical meters, fines, be amended as follows. Section 50.08, billing, wind due, penalty, strike all content of paragraph B, insert, all customers will be billed monthly as specified in combined utility systems, subchapter 55.05. Section 50.10, tampering with electric meters, fines. Customers shall be held responsible for tampering with, breaking seals of, interfering with, connecting or disconnecting the city's electric meters or other electrical equipment of the city installed on the customers premises, and shall be held liable for same according to law. Notwithstanding, any person who reconnects or bypasses a meter that has been disconnected for non-payment of service will be assessed $150 for the first occurrence, and $300 per occurrence for any additional occurrences, in addition to any other applicable balances, fees, or charges due. Likewise, any person who establishes electric service by bypass, bypassing, connecting, or reconnecting a meter will be assessed, strike $100, insert $150 per occurrence. No one except the employees or agents of the city shall be allowed to connect, disconnect, or make any internal or external adjustments to any meter or any other piece of apparatus which shall be the property of the city. All ordinances or parts of... All ordinances or parts of ordinances are in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Councilman Copeland, your turn.
Aye.
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 Want to, Cable Television Amendments, B 2015-11.
An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance styled an ordinance relating to the operation of a municipal-owned cable television communication system to provide service to residents and customers within the City of Barstown in Nessun County, Kentucky, authorizing the expenditure of money from the 1984 bond sale and from the general fund to purchase the system and the creation of a department which shall be called the Barstown Cable TV Department. The City of Barstown, Kentucky does hereby ordain that Section 54.07, Monthly Billing, Late Fee, Disconnection Due to Default, Paragraph A, be amended as follows. Strike all content of Paragraph A, insert: All customers will be billed monthly as specified in Combined Utility Systems, Subchapter 55.05. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Councilman Simpson?
Aye.
Aye.
Number nine, reports from the staff and committees, so I'll start with the electric and cable TV committee meeting that was on April the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Councilman Simpson, you have the floor.
Well, the whole meeting was based on working on the budget. We addressed several different items. We also had some discussion on some of the same items tonight, but other than just discussing the budget, that's about what the meeting is about. Jeff, you, or Roland, you all got anything to add? Of course, we have no one tonight, so we're working on it.
We'll do the finance committee. It was April the sixteenth, two thousand and ten. Council Williams, you have the floor.
Okay. At that particular meeting, Paul Combs, who initially did the study, I believe, in nineteen eighty, was at the meeting, and he was explaining to us how he, basically, well, he was just explaining to us, he was suggesting to us how we should go forward at this point. And so, he is going to get some additional information and come back to us. We also have a few comments from our chief financial officer, Tracy Hudson. She gave us a preliminary of budget, and at this point, it is still ongoing, and we'll have another report here next week.
Like you mentioned, I think this way that the finance committees, and each individual person that's in the committee is, I think, is a different way of doing what we've been, the way we've been doing it. I think it works better as we're getting into the finances of the city. I think it's, I think it's working better.
I have a question to ask the finance chairperson. Reading the minutes, there has been some discussion on a full-time mayor and our council. Could you elaborate on that?
I'm sorry to interrupt your question.
I said, in the minutes, there has been some discussion on a full-time mayor and our council. Could you elaborate on that?
Okay. Basically, what he stated was, there were some positions we had already authorized, and he just mentioned that as part of a discussion.
In the prior, as we was on the council, when I was on council with you, we always wondered about what the position of the mayor should be, is it part-time or is it full-time? And I think we've all come to the conclusion it should be at full-time. So in this Paul Combs study, we, and I think you would agree, that should be involved in that study, to see if it's, you know, to what that mayor should be paid at full-time.
So, you're indicating mayor and our council member is also equally indicated here?
The, what's, the council won't be full-time, but what Paul, Mr. Combs has already suggested is, if you compare what the city council members get paid versus what magistrates get paid versus what other council members in our town setting, you know, the same size, you know, should we be getting paid more? Of course, that's not on by you, and that's totally up to you. He's just doing a complete study of the pay of everyone across the board that's involved in the city.
Okay.
And Mr. Hagan, I think he is getting the job description back on that, so that was a question. Councilman Hagan had a question in the finance, if he wanted job descriptions, and he's working on those in your area.
Long-term planning committee, Councilman Liddiam, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. We had a long-term committee meeting, fire chief and fire superintendent, had a discussion in the fire department building. As the city grows, existing building does not allow for growth, the height and width of the building. There are femigines available of multi-story building that house many entrances. Fire fighters have been researching and looking at other facilities in other towns that house not only fire department stations. Mayor, I would like to turn this over, turn this project over to the safety committee, fire and police committee, so the fire department can continue studying the next step, phase.
We're all ears. We'll listen to the fire department and police department?
No, I said, I would like to turn it over to the safety committee.
Okay. That's fine. Get with them and let them discuss it.
Okay.
Anything that helps the community and help the emergency services.
Okay. I'll get with you in the new talk.
You can.
We had a discussion loop around Barstown, sixty-two West and thirty-one E intersection. Sixty-two West and thirty-one E intersection is a very busy intersection. Traffic flow over seven thousand daily. Morning especially, in the afternoon about three-thirty in the peak hour, school letting out people, off and work, and children walking. It is very congested and hazardous. About eight years ago, City of Barstown, I think Bobby Hughes was on the council then, the city had a design, as a matter of fact, they had it staked off and ready to go, and it got pushed back. It was designed, the name of it was going to be a roundabout, and it got pushed back on the back corner. The highway department, they are going to construct a bypass in a six-year plan, construct north-west bypass of Barstown from thirty-one E to sixty-two, to US sixty-two to relieve congestion. And also, they're going to construct another bypass, a north-western bypass of Barstown from Kentucky two forty-five to US thirty-one E north to relieve congestion. I had a discussion with the county judge, Judge Watts, and Judge Watts indicated that the county planner to connect, they're going to connect a road from Thomas Nelson High School to New Haven Road. We hope, once all this is constructed and connected, that we will alleviate the congestion that we have in that area. The committee recommend to the mayor, write the transportation department in regard to improving certain intersection number six.
As a matter of fact, there now has had a meeting with the transportation department on several other projects, and those plans, there's one plan that's years out, and I think the plan that you're talking about is years out.
I don't know. I think that's in a six-year plan. They blurred that construction, that bypass. I thought that was in a six-year plan.
I'd say, I believe it's in the unscheduled needs program, the bypass.
Yes.
And what is in the six-year plan is a scoping study, meaning kind of a layout, and where it might go, I think it was what, fifty thousand dollars, for a scoping study, which may give you the route.
Five hundred thousand.
Five, excuse me, I missed a bit. So, yeah, five hundred thousand. Anyhow, that's as far as, that got committed to funds.
So, I think it'd be safe to say it's years out.
It's unbudgeted, so.
You know, yeah, tricky here.
Right.
I don't, you know, I think Francis, when the Thomas Nelson was even built, even way before that, when they developed two forty-five into what it is today, there was talks of that happening, and I, in my personal opinion, I don't think you are out of the living to see that time.
Well, from what I had a discussion with him, I'm not going to go into detail of everything you said, but it may come sooner than we think. We may be still up.
I don't know.
Anyway, could you, could you?
Yes, I'll be more than happy to come and get back with you.
You take Tippmann Avenue, sixty-two and forty-five, and sixty-two at thirty-one E. It has been studied for years, you know, and maybe they can, for the time being, before they build a bypass, maybe they can come up with some kind of solution.
I'll tell you what I did, I'll call, I'll call the transportation department, see what I can squeeze out of them.
Okay.
And since they give me a year, that it would be done or looked at.
Okay. All right.
But I agree, it's been talked about a long time, so.
We had another discussion, long-term planning for all departments. Once I make a comment, I'm going to call on Councilmember Hayden and Councilwoman Lisa Copeland to comment to the council. Each one of you councilmembers should have a copy, Fred compiled all this information together. My comment, we have a proposed budget department administration. In this department administration, it has long-range and short-range plans, and also it has five-year plan with the big ticket on it. And some long-range plans reach certain streets ten to fifteen years, so I consider that a long-range planning of eighty miles a street. At this time, I would like to call on Councilmember Hayden and Councilmember Copeland to comment to the council.
Did the other councilmembers get a copy of this?
Yes.
Well, as some of you know, this long-term plan is my favorite topic, has been for years and years. All I did was print what I did back in two thousand and eleven, twelve, at Thomas Nelson Council, where we had this talk of a long-term plan. So that's, it's kind of dated, but it's a format, it's a template for us to develop a long-term plan. As I've given this speech many times, I just, I think we need to have a written long-term plan for all the departments that this council looks at and approves, and as you saw, if everybody sees in the budget, each of these departments has these long-range ideas, and as far as I'm concerned, until we put them in a plan, and this body approves them, they're not really a plan or just a wish list. I'd like to formalize that, put it in this format, so we really, especially when a new councilperson comes on, I imagine it would have been for us to have something like this. So, you know, this discussion of a two-million-dollar firehouse, that's the first time I heard of it within this meeting we had the other day. So, I just think it's something we need to work on. It needs the mayor's support, it needs the staff's support, it needs the council's support. I would like for this, again, I think that a good place to start is the plans the departments already have that are in this five-year plan, is to flesh those out in a paragraph form, put it in this one document, so we can all know, and then we can publish it, turn it online, so the people we work for know what we're doing for the next, what our plans are for the next five years, what we think we should be doing, and it's going to take from everybody's part. All that information is there, all the departments have these plans, it's just a matter of getting it in a format that is in one spot, and I ask for the mayor's support, so because the staff needs help with this, and these things can start with the committee. We can take this template I've started with and just start fleshing it out, and when we get to the committee reports, I might have a larger, we can start on our part of it.
Well, I think if you look at your budget, and I'll use Jeff, I think on some of that, you have a lifetime expectancy of what you've estimated, like on some wiring, it's maybe ten years here, five years, twenty years, and that's kind of his long-range plan of that, but it's on the same scope. I agree with Fred on that, and to that respect, is if someone else isn't here as councilmember or mayor, we're not here, we'll give the, that person that follows an idea of where we were looking to go, and of course, that long-range planning is something that can be changed by different councilmembers or.
Every year. If you look at this, what I've written, that's my proposal, is every year the council gets it out, dusts it off, looks at it, is this still what we want to do? Yes, no, the councilmembers, things change, the city grows, whatever. It's a dynamic document, and it doesn't reside in somebody's head, so if somebody run over by a bread truck, next day, that plan still exists. We don't have to think, well, what was he going to do?
Okay. I would like for another committee member comment also, then the councilmembers can comment.
Well, if I finish that up, then I'll be done, but Planning the Zone, if y'all know Planning the Zone, Planning the Zone has this twenty, is it a twenty-year copy of the plan?
Yes, it is.
They kind of have the same thing, and they can go back and say, okay, you know, we are here five years ago, how are we adjusting to this plan? And sometimes it's way off, and sometimes it's not too far, but, you know, it's a wish list, but go ahead, councilmen, I'm sorry.
You have the floor.
I did agree to it, and I thought it was a great idea. I didn't get to look at all of it, because we had just seen it at the meeting, and like you said, it is a template, so I hope that we all would be able to get together and help you with that to formalize it officially. Also, I would like to state that this is a great idea, but hopefully, if we approve this, you know, later on, that we would be accountable to it. And I'm sure now that we have the mayor, you know, that he'll make sure that this is accountable for the next couple of years or whenever, because what's the use of having that plan if we don't hold true to it, if everyone doesn't buy into it? So, I hope that we'll all be on one accord when you do that, because it is a lot of work, and it would be educational for the next people that would come in.
Well, I'm hoping that making administrations or councilmembers accountable to it is one of those things, is financing, if you're going to be held that this bypass should be put in, and we have to fund it, you know, you gotta be careful in making us accountable for it.
Well, let me reword that. Let me reword that. I'm saying, making sure that we, it's present, you know, that we continue to look at it, that it just doesn't sit in a folder or what have you. That's what I'm saying, I clarify that, I apologize.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes, sir. If I'm out of order, you tell me. Somebody will.
Tim, tell your partner.
This is the same plan you gave me several years ago. That's it. Okay. It's the same one I made.
I got one other one, sorry.
Yeah, I understand, just for clarification.
And all that formatting and all that is Barbie's work. Just so I give her credit for that. She did all the formatting.
But anyway, I would like to go on record. But anyway, I, I would like to go on record as adopting this with the necessary amendments, because it still is within the scope of a timeline here, because it's 2012, 16. So we can, you know, if everybody's in agreement, just go and adopt it and then amend it.
No. No, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to adopt it tonight, because I don't think that, as Councilman Copeland says, she has not, has not been able to treat it thoroughly. And I'm aware of it, and Fred brought it out. But I, I would hate to do that. I don't want to do that right now, if that's okay.
Also, I have some questions. Do we have a timeframe on putting this together? And also, my next question, with all those departments, what are they going to follow? I hope they don't fall under my commit, long-term, not on 15 committees. I'm saying, I mean, we have 15 committees.
You have a lot, Francis.
No. They paid enough for that. So anyway, I tell you what. No, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking a question. We have quite a few committees. Now how are you going to?
Can, can we do this? Here's what I would like to do, if it's okay with you.
Right.
Is let's get, let's get it past this budget. And once we, once we pass this budget and, and we get past this little threshold that we're at, and then let's go back and let's get each department head to do what they think that their five or 10-year long-term plan is. And let them put it together and bring it back to us and present their long-term plan to you, and you can compile all that information. Not, not just you, but the committee. I'm sorry.
I'll tell you what I'll do, since I'm on the committee. If I get the information the mayor speaks of, I'll, I'll write it. How's that? Anyway, we need, no, that's not good enough? Well, we need to discuss this. I don't like.
Well, take it back, take it.
Right.
Just take it back, when, when the, when the department heads get all their long-term planning information out and, and make it kind of short.
Right.
And then bring it back to the long-term planning committee and, and y'all, you guys hammer it out. That's what you're, that's what you're here for. That's what the committee's for.
I know. I mean, but, you know, we have all these committees. You take recreation, cable, they all follow lives. Lot, lot of the information, you know, without even having to come to the long-term.
Well, what about if we, what about if the councilmembers want to be involved? We do it in a working session.
I'd be better.
Yes.
I'd rather do it at work session, than cramp all that into a long-term planning committee.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Reynolds.
All right. Could the department heads get a copy of the template? If we're going to be doing some of the work on it?
I have a decision.
Can we get a copy of it?
Sure. I mean, you should have a copy.
Okay.
All head departments should have a copy.
Well, I, I will make sure that Ms. Graham and Ms. Bobby will get the department heads a copy of it, so. And we'll do that. Let's, let's work it out in working session.
God bless. Okay.
Anything else on long-term?
No, I told you. Ms. Copeland, anything else?
No.
Fred?
Yeah, I have two things on committee meetings. Talk about the annexation committee. The, as we spoke of last time, I talked to the mayor's staff about putting these costs together. And it is, quite honestly, with the budget, there hasn't been a lot of work done on. Plus, it involves a lot of things we hadn't talked about, which is mowing and chipping trucks and maybe more personnel. It gets more involved. So, and with the budgeting process going on, quite honestly, that's kind of on the back burner right now. So what I'm going to suggest, and I'll give it to you two guys after the meeting, is I'm going to call the annexation committee meeting, so we go ahead and address the mayor's request and get that off the table. And then we'll pick up on the rest of it. So we'll get after the meeting. We'll call it shortly. So we can get that done. Water wastewater, I'd like to have a water wastewater committee meeting, so we start going over the budget. You two guys are on that, so maybe we can get together afterwards and pick a time. We can have a meeting on that. That fits with Larry with your script. Those are the two items I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayden. You go, Councilmember. For ten. Mr. Hayden, you got anything?
Just kind of an email today from the lawyer for the city's election. And KU will have their estimate of costs for the new formula rates that go into effect. We have so many days to appeal that. If there's a flaw in it, we will hire, we will employ Brown Thornton to do the work for the cities and get back with it. This is the first time they have the true-up. And what it amounts to is a true-up provision in the contract is they predict what, they put their cost in a big formula, and they get that automatically. But then they got through the commission the rights to come after it's all said and done, and if the weather was hotter than they predicted, then they get, they get the income that they were promised. If it were, or if it was heavier than that, they can true-up, meaning they can go back and get the second bite of the apple to get what their formula said they should have done. And then if it was lighter load and their expenses went down, then it goes in our favor. So there is a provision to review the outcome versus their budget and make it fit. So I, I could talk longer. It's fairly complicated. It's the first time we've been through that.
Picture a gallon of gas, you know, you've got, you've got to agree what you're going to pay for gas for your vehicle for all year, right? So that's, you're going to write a check every month for how many gallons you consume. But what that gas actually costs gets reviewed at the end of that calendar year. And if you actually spent more or less than that total cost of that, then it was a delta. Could go in our favor or against us.
Somehow I kind of figured it'd probably go against us. So the estimate of cost is, in the budget, is seven or eight percent, and it'll be something near that. It could be a little lower. It just kind of depends on their costs. But they know, sometimes like us, it might overshoot the cost because they just didn't get it done. So there are things that can affect that. So anyhow, that's.
So then Brown, that Brown company is going to, they're going to have, they're going to be pushing the buttons on the calculator for us?
For us, about, well, all the cities.
All the others, too.
All the KU cities, about 11, 13 of us, rather. So we share that cost. And so that's just routine.
Does that mean to have them pushing the buttons on the calculator that's against us, and we don't check the figures?
They've been working on it, and now it's our turn to check. It'd be ready May 1st.
Very good. Jeff, anything?
Smithsonian Network is going to go off the air Thursday night. They didn't give us an additional extension. The programming committee asked for additional time to survey all folks in Digital Basic, where the channel has to be relocated to. They didn't want to make that decision yea or nay without feedback from that group of customers. So it can no longer be in a little niche HD tier. It has to be in Digital Basic. So we've got a direct mailer out to everybody. It's, they can just clip it and direct mail back to us. Apply by mail, it's covered. Or they can email program@barstowncable.net and let us know how they feel about the channels.
Can I, how do you think it'll make any difference?
It's a, uh, yeah, I don't know. I mean, get the results in, and half of them say add it, and half of them say don't. I don't know.
No, I mean, they haven't turned this off yet, though, have they?
I emailed them today, saying, they, they emailed and said you, you were going dark on Thursday night. I said, yeah, if you don't give us some extension, we have to. Meaning, are you going to execute the new contract and put it in Digital Basic by Thursday night? And we've told them that we can't do that.
Well, perhaps if, in the morning, I get with me, and I'll call.
We can try that.
And.
It just affects 130 people at the moment, including one of the members of our programming committee, who's his favorite channel.
Jeff, what's your channel?
The Smithsonian Channel.
Number of numbers?
Six, oh, something.
Get with me. Let me, let me go to the begging and cheering closet and.
Yeah.
We'll just see, maybe to get this. And they were just waiting on a study from you, is what they're waiting on, or?
Correct. They wanted feedback from the subscribers of the Digital Basic tier. Yeah, the program, the program. Right. You know, it's, it's a channel of costs. I'm not reviewing their actual cost, but it's less than 50 cents. It would be a 4% impact to the Digital Basic tier. And really, it's with the built-in pass-through, you don't really even have to take, it doesn't impact the budget. It doesn't, all it does is impact the rate. So in effect, and I think the council, the committee, programming committee would be sensitive to what the council felt about that. But the math is simple. We don't care it, there's no impact. If we add it to the Digital Basic, it goes up by 4%. It's a pretty good channel, by the way.
Get with me in the morning, and I'll make the call on the staff.
Very good. Sorry to go along with you on that. That's going to happen Thursday night.
Let's trace them.
The budget probably is giving gray hair tomorrow.
Yes. I lost mine, so don't worry about it.
No, everything's been good. I take this position. Still learning a lot of new things. Looking for feedback from councilmembers.
Tracy, when is that meeting on the 5th? 5 o'clock.
Oh, 5 o'clock, I'm sorry.
Councilmembers, you want to, you want to do that?
Okay, working sessions here.
Ready?
We're good.
Nothing bad this question. Larry?
No, sir.
Good. Ms. Copeland?
I have a question. We had, we had discussion on the Nelson County Dispatch and Recreation. And you had stated that you were going to get, you and Fred, we're going to talk about it. Were there any more discussions about it? The contract expires, I think, in June?
We, we are in the process, and we're probably going to start a discussion soon. It's just, just a matter of making things right and even to the Barstown taxpayers, where it's fair to the Barstown taxpayers.
Yes, okay.
Are you going to meet with the judge executive or how are you going to do?
I'd say it's going to be the judge and myself and Councilman Hayden, and then the judge, and if he wants a magistrate, he can. And I figure he probably will. But there's, there's, actually, there's three contracts there, which is the interloper agreement for dispatch, interloper agreement for the red department, and the Barstown fire contract. Agreement there between the operation and the city. So there's three that's kind of going on.
Okay. Any unfinished business? New business? Need a, need a motion in a second to discuss the special permit with St. Catherine's College fireworks.
Make a motion to discuss. Special permit for St. Catherine's College fireworks.
Second. Discussion?
Could I offer something just real quick? I know, Councilman Copeland, this is your first fireworks special permit. There's a situation in regard to outdoor sales for the city of Barstown, where if someone has, wants to come in, they have to couple with a nonprofit realization. So we'll have several of these fireworks special permits that are coming up before the July date, in which not only will the nonprofit be part of the discussion, but also, as you noticed from the attachments, it's also the actual unit that's supplying the fireworks. So all of that comes together as a request of the board of council as a special permit to be able to work within that, wherever they're located, and for that period of time. So just wanted to give you an update on that.
Thank you.
But we do need a first and second for the approval.
Well, but I'll make a motion to approve the motion.
Thank you.
Now, second.
Thank you.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? I'll have it. Fireworks on lit. City councilmembers' comments, if you guys have anything to comment? Cemetery deeds, number 13. If there's no objections?
I was going to make one comment, man. I was going to say, a good meeting. I wasn't.
I didn't hear what she was going to say.
I would like to do the update on the police K-9 that y'all approved are okay for after the vet, and it went public through the media. More contributors come forth and pay for lots of dogs off the city. Going to be a great dog for someone on the work.
More money's, more money's been donated by Pride and the Business.
Very little will be coming out of the budget for the dog.
Yeah. I guess you can really say that those donations is really taking a bite out of that. That's not good. Okay, let's move on. Number 13, cemetery deeds. If there's no, no objection, we will adopt the motion for cemetery deeds for Eva Moreland and Stacy James Wolf Jr. Okay, since there's no objections, the motion to approve the cemetery deeds is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, guys. And no announcements? So if there's no objection, we will adopt the motion to adjourn. Since there's no objections, the motion to adjourn is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you.